Thank you.
Commissioner Eggenberger, could you please take the call the roll?
Sure.
Commissioner Cruz.
Here.
Commissioner Eggenberger, here. Commissioner Foster.
Here.
Commissioner Janowski.
Here.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Singh.
Here.
Commissioner Watsons.
Here.
Commissioner Weber.
Here.
And Chairperson Zubor.
I am here, thank you. And we also, for the record, have Patrick Sloan, our planner, our township planner, and we have Courtney Agrusa, our council. Thank you, yeah. I was trying to think of the word we usually use. It's not council, but anyway. Our consultant, I think. Could anyone like to make a motion about the minutes of June 2nd?
I move to approve.
All right.
Support.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Weber and support by Commissioner Foster to approve the minutes. Please, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, any opposed? Very good. How about accepting the agenda? All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Lee and support by Commissioner Eggenberger? Geez. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Communications, Patrick, anything besides what's in the packet and in our email from this, from earlier?
No additional communications.
Okay, very good, thank you. We are going to, I'm going to open up for public comment if anyone is here not to talk about one of the items on our agenda. If you're here for any other reason, which I'm guessing no, but anybody here that isn't going to talk about Viva Bene, the Rusty Nail Lounge, or is it Schuler? Is that how we pronounce that? Okay. Anybody that wants to talk about anything besides those topics, now's your chance. All right. We need to have that. Very good, so we have three public hearings this evening. The first is Viva Bene Canton, where we will consider final plan development district for parcel number 062-99-0005-700, which is also known as 46149 Ford Road. Property is located on the south side of Ford Road and the west side of Gorman Road. Proposed use is housing for the elderly with all units restricted to ages of 55 and older. Patrick, please tell us all about it.
Sure, thank you. The Viva Bene preliminary PDD plan was previously before the Planning Commission, I think it was at the April 7th meeting this year. So, at that meeting, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the preliminary PDD, and at its meeting on May 13th of this year, the Township Board of Trustees approved the preliminary PDD, subject to the same conditions as the Planning Commission. So, shortly after preliminary PDD approval, the applicant proceeded with applications for final PDD and for site plan review. So, the plans that are in the packet this evening are more detailed and they address many of the conditions that were adopted at the time of preliminary PDD review. The overall layout, number of units, the concept design of the site is largely the same as when it was during preliminary PDD review. And for the applications, the final PDD is combined with the site plan review. So, there's two different applications, but our staff report addresses both of the applications. The application is for a housing for the elderly use consisting of 180 units, which are proposed as 140 units in the main building and 40 attached units around the periphery of the site on the south and the west sides. The development is proposed to be 100% independent living, so there's no dependent care or memory care, which was proposed on the previous application and the previous development for Monarch Grove. For the PDD, the following definite benefits are proposed. First, the architectural design of the buildings. The second, paving of Gorman Road to the site's entrance, including reconstruction of the approach to three lanes with dedicated right and left turn lanes from Gorman Road onto Ford Road. Third, extending the sidewalk along the south side of Ford Road, eastward about 620 feet to connect to the existing sidewalk in front of Bell Tire. Fourth, the addition of northbound and southbound right turn lights at the intersection of Canton Center Road and Ford Road to permit overlapping phases for northbound and southbound right turns. This particular condition was out of the traffic impact study that the applicant did, indicating that there were some traffic deficiencies at the intersection of Ford Road and Canton Center Road. So, including these right turn lights was a mitigating factor to some of the existing conditions as well as the traffic impact of the project. For the fifth definite benefit, maintaining over 25% of the site is open space. And the sixth definite benefit is the outdoor recreation areas for residents of the development that include a swimming pool, pickleball courts, bocce courts, and a dog park. Although those amenities are only for the residents of the development, their use by Viva Bene's residents would lessen the use and impact on public recreation facilities, especially pickleball courts, which are popular in the community. In terms of the overall development, everything is in our report in terms of the schedule modifications, the design standards, et cetera. And there, the modifications are largely the same as preliminary PDD with a few revisions, one of which is the building length is the same as depicted on the plans, but it's measured at different points, so there's an adjustment in terms of the number of the building length. And then, there's an additional modification shown as three ground signs instead of one. Currently, the sign ordinance and the zoning ordinance permits one ground sign per site. The applicant proposes three ground signs. The proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance, which has been recommended by the Planning Commission, not yet adopted by the board, that amendment would allow for two ground signs, one along each frontage. So, the application is exceeding even that in terms of the number of allowable ground signs. The three ground signs are located, one is at the corner of Ford and Gorman, one is at the right in, right out entrance off of Ford Road, and the other is at the entrance at Gorman Road. And for these particular ground signs, we recommend approval of that modification for a few different reasons. First, starting with the ground sign at the intersection of Ford and Gorman. As traffic is coming westbound along Ford Road, their only way to get into the site is to turn onto Gorman, so it's important to have a ground sign as close to the intersection of Ford and Gorman as possible to alert drivers going westbound on Ford Road of that entrance and where they have to turn. Ford Road is 55 miles an hour, so at the high speeds there, and sometimes even faster than 55 miles an hour, it's important that something indicates to traffic where they turn. The second ground sign is at the right in, right out on the west side of the site along Ford Road. This ground sign is also useful for the eastbound traffic on Ford Road where that traffic can be caught before it needs to get to Gorman, and it's an opportunity for cars to turn in. So, having a sign that far west is important also for alerting traffic, especially if traffic intends to turn into that drive and it slows down on Ford Road. We don't want traffic to slow too much on Ford Road and just slow the traffic behind it, so having the sign there would be good site identification at that particular driveway. And finally, the ground sign at the entrance on Gorman Road, although all traffic coming from Gorman Road, it's fairly obvious that traffic goes down Gorman, turns right into the driveway. What the ground sign at that driveway will function for is to notify traffic that that is the turning entrance and minimize the number of trips that will miss the driveway and end up turning around at the end of the street. Gorman Road is a residential street, there are a few single-family residences, and it's a dead-end street, so if people miss that drive and they continue going south, they're going to be turning around at the end of the street and possibly in other people's driveways, so it's just a way to direct traffic. The ground signs will be designed according to the zoning ordinance standards with a masonry base and not exceeding the maximum height, maximum area, so there's no other modifications from the ground sign standards other than to have two ground signs instead of one. And the reasons for that are the traffic safety and locating them at critical intersections. For the traffic impact study, nothing has changed with the traffic impact study since the preliminary PDD was reviewed in April. There's still the recommendation from the traffic engineer, Manik and Smith Group, to install a 150 to 250-foot full-width deceleration lane at the right in, right out site driveway at Ford Road. The reason that recommendation is there is so that cars intending to turn right going eastbound on Ford Road can get out of the travel lane and decelerate as they get to the driveway entrance. Our engineering division supports that recommendation, and they've notified MDOT that our engineering services division does support that recommendation from Manik and Smith Group. So, ultimately, the decision of whether to require the deceleration lane is up to MDOT. We've notified MDOT of the township's support of that deceleration lane. And other, other than that, the only items that we have where we have some recommended conditions of approval are for the lighting to show decorative fixtures that are 12 feet high at the entrances from the road. There were a few additional bollards that are required to be shown for the dumpster enclosure. Also, some of the directional signage design needs to be modified to comply with the ordinance. And I think that was mostly it in terms of just relatively minor design features that have to be updated. For the landscaping, the landscaping plan is designed to comply with the requirements of the ordinance for the frontage landscaping along Ford and Gorman, the parking lot landscaping, the detention landscaping, and the utility equipment screening. Some of the general site landscaping standards for the units require additional trees and shrubs. The additional shrubs can be planted along building foundations, and many of the additional required trees can be planted along Ford Road, some areas on the interior of the site, some areas next to detached buildings, and along the perimeter of the site. We don't yet know if, based on the design, if all of the required trees for the unit landscaping can fit on the site. If it can't, section 5.07 of the zoning ordinance allows the Planning Commission to grant modifications from certain landscape requirements, and that's something that the Planning Commission can entertain at a later time, once we have more information on the site's ability to fit more trees. In some cases, that modification authority has been exercised by the Planning Commission for multi-family developments where it's more than one story, so with multiple stories and more landscaping per unit, sometimes there's only so much space on the site to fit the required landscaping. So, our recommendation there is that the applicant revise the plans, try to fit all the required trees based on the general site landscape standards, and if for some reason it can't, just based on the size and capacity of the site, then we can come back later with a modification request to the Planning Commission. The last item I'll mention in our report is regarding the architecture of the buildings. The applicant is requesting modification from the masonry standards, both the brick and stone requirements for the main building and for the cottages. We have a summary table on page five of our report that summarizes the percentage of materials on the buildings. The paragraph after that indicates on some of the facades what the percentages are. Because of the shape of the building, the facades on the plans are named primary, secondary, and tertiary, based on where they face. For the main building, the primary facades are the two sides on the north closest to Ford Road. They have 49% brick and stone on the west side, 51, almost 51 and a half on the east side facade. The side on the east closest to Gorman Road is just over 64% brick and stone, and the south side of the clubhouse is over 79% brick and stone. For those secondary and tertiary facades, the fiber cement and windows are the dominant materials on those sides. So, on the main building, it looks like the two sides that face Ford Road, between those two sides, it looks like it's roughly 50%, and then the sides that face Gorman Road and then to the south are over 50% brick. So, for those areas that are facing a public right-of-way or highly visible, there's more brick and stone on those facades. The west side of the main building is just over 26% brick and stone. The south side of the main building is about 26 and 3/4% brick and stone. Between those sides of the main building and the boundary of cobblestone ridge are some large setbacks, the cottage buildings, and dense landscaping. So, we'll defer to the Planning Commission regarding whether there should be additional masonry on the west side of the main building and the south side of the main building because they do face cobblestone ridge, but there are some buffering in terms of the setbacks, the cottage buildings, and the dense landscaping that will soften those non-masonry features of the main building. So, with that, our recommendation on the final PDD and for the site plan is a recommendation of approval, subject to three conditions. First, revising the plans to address Planning Division staff comments on landscaping, lighting, dumpster enclosure, and sign area. Second, revising the PDD agreement pursuant to comments by Planning Division staff and Township Legal Counsel. And regarding the PDD agreement, our comments are only very minor. And third, compliance with all state, county, and township requirements, including the permitting and construction of the off-site sidewalk along Ford Road and the traffic signals at the intersection of Ford Road and Canton Center Road. So, that concludes our staff report, and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Patrick. The project sponsor is here. Would you like to go to the podium and add to anything Patrick said?
Tall, hopefully you can hear me. Good evening, my name is Matt Quappis with Avenue Development. Along with me tonight, I also have Meg Sutton from Avenue and Joe Christopher from Spalding D. Decker and Associates, our site engineer. I think Patrick's done a really good job summarizing what we're looking to do on the site. You know, just to remind everyone, you know, the existing PDD that was previously approved for this site had a combination of independent living, assisted living, and memory care, and we're looking to just, you know, move to a more independent living model, which seems to be the, the direction that boomers are choosing these days, and it also lessens the impact on emergency services as well as traffic overall. So, I think, Patrick, if you can just go to the next, just to reorient, this one's fine, I think that one's covered in the packet, and then just, yeah, just, you know, kind of seeing how we're using the site here, trying to maintain as much setback and buffer with the neighbors as possible, preserving as much green space as possible. And what you don't see on here is those two large blank areas, one to the south of the cottages, and then to the east are significant stormwater detention facilities that will be on-site as well. And then, here's an updated rendering that we just wanted to share to show, you know, the, the level of impact that the doors and windows are having on this overall development. What's unique about the Canton zoning code is that it takes the full facade, including windows and glazing and doors, and when you do that, if you're meeting 50% requirement, this building loses a lot of its interest because we essentially, because of the amount of investment we're putting into daylight and doors for the property, it would almost require us to have the entire building be brick, and then that just really creates this monolithic view of the building that I don't think is what we're looking to do here. So, this allows us to create some interest across the property. So, wanted to highlight that with a better imagery than what we had the previous time we were here. And then, you know, Patrick summarized these, but just showing where some of those definite public benefits exist on the site, and you can see the stormwater facilities there in better view there. So, happy to answer any questions that you may have, and thank you for your time.
Yes, please.
I'm chairman, I move to open the public hearing.
Support.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Weber and support by Commissioner Foster to open the public hearing. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Awesome. Does anyone from the audience want to speak about this project?
I move to close the public hearing.
Support.
All right, we have, again, have a motion by Commissioner Weber and support by Commissioner Foster to close the public hearing. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. I have a question before I start with the committee here, the, the board. On the, on the signage, there's a sheet in here that's got signage on it, and I, it's one of the site plans, let me find it again. It's the signage plan. You, I didn't see anything in the packet that talks about Sevi Health Primary Care. Where is that going to go, and what's that? Is that the fitness clinic?
Yeah, there is a, there is a primary care component to this for the residents. That sign is more showing the fit and flavor of that for, which would be attached to the clubhouse itself.
Oh, okay.
So, we wanted to show some representative images, what we've used from previous projects, but the intent of that would be on the building, not on the ground anywhere.
Well, I saw it on the, the sign adjacent, next to that, Patrick, if you scroll over to the right-hand side there, that's why I was asking. So, that is, is that actually what you're calling the fitness clinic on the floor plan?
There's a, there's a clinic on the floor plan, which is kind of in the clubhouse on the westernmost side, I think, Plan West.
Okay. Oh, I see, I'm misreading this, clubhouse, comma, fitness, and clinic. Okay, got it.
There's joint programming that occurs for the residents, so as a part of the wellness program that we initiate, we want to make sure there's good adjacencies between any medical use and the fitness and wellness areas that exist.
Okay, thank you, that clarifies that.
What exactly are we terming primary care? But what, how are you using that? What's, what is your definition of primary care as you're defining it in this project?
So, it's really care coordination and care concierge, I guess is how you would look at that, supporting residents, you know, with any medical needs that they may have. That's not happening there on the campus itself, but navigating, you know, surgeries or anything like that, there's a care component to this to, you know, the overall goal of this is to eliminate the need to move into like an assisted living for as long as possible, so having that care coordination on the front end helps prolong the health span of our residents so that they can remain more active longer into their aging process.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to start with Commissioner Janowski. Can, can you please use your mic?
Can you expand upon that part there? So, you're talking concierge, so there's no actual medical services being performed on the, at the, is it like a doctor's office?
There, there's a physician available that is accessible to the residents, yes. However, we haven't quite made that decision as to whether or not they're going to be there.
And it's residence only?
That is correct.
Okay. Everything else looks good, good job with the traffic, which looks very, very good, so, thank you.
Commissioner Oka? I'm sorry. I do, I guess. We hit too many alans. Cruz, gosh. The plan looks good.
Thank you.
One question about the Ford Road access. So, that's a eastbound in and outbound.
Yeah, so it's right in, right out. So, there won't be any westbound traffic being able to turn into there. So, part of the feedback that we did receive from the township's traffic consultant, which we 100% agreed with, was, you know, making that pork chop in the middle more significant to prevent anyone from being able to make that left turn into that spot. This is intended to be just for flow of traffic, right in, right out. So, anyone coming from Beck can turn in, and then leaving to go towards Canton Center could go out as well.
So, that pork chop was enlarged from the last plan?
Yeah, setback and enlarged.
Okay. Because it looks like I can make that turn, that left turn is still doable.
I don't know from a, like a, yeah, I'll let the traffic expert speak on that.
Easily.
I'm Joe Christopher from Spalding D. Decker, the engineering consultant. We actually received additional feedback from MDOT recently, which will create a vastly substantial, more substantial pork chop in.
Okay. Yeah, because.
It extends. After discussion with MDOT, it's going to extend along. Quite more of a division.
Good, yeah. You can also do it by increasing the radius, and then the pork chop radius follows that, you know?
Yes.
So, it's, it's more of an angle.
Right, and also to incorporate MDOT's comments, we will. Wider, which will allow.
Good.
Mass on the center island.
Joe, you're not picked up unless you're speaking into the mics, so could you just repeat all that for the people at home?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so, based on comments that we received recently from MDOT, we will need to make the entrance drive wider, extend the center island further to the south, and also with the wider drive, we'll be able to widen the center island, making it more massive.
Thank you. Thanks.
And then, do you have like a no-left turn for people that are coming?
Yeah.
Westbound?
The, the signage within the right-of-way will need to be coordinated with MDOT. Obviously, we have no objection to adding a no-left turn sign, but.
I think you need it.
Yes, that will.
Even with the geometrics, the sign is enforceable.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what's missing at, or not.
Raising canes.
Yeah, raising canes, yeah. Yeah.
All I got, looks good.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Cruz, and Commissioner Foster.
Thank you, I think it looks good. I agree with what you said about the facade containing less brick, just a little encouragement to the planning, Patrick, updating our ordinance to reflect changes that we will allow different variations of materials, just so it's clear to the residents, since we always seem to grant variances. That's it, good job.
Thank you.
Commissioner Weber?
I agree with everything that's been said so far. I, I guess I have a question about the deceleration lane. Patrick, I know it's not in your specifically called out in the model motion, but in the condition number three, I know, I see you talk about the traffic signals, which I absolutely, I think that's great. Should there be any mention in there about the deceleration lane?
At this point, not knowing if MDOT would be requiring it, or what MDOT's view is on that, we left it more open-ended, deferring to MDOT on that, since it's under their jurisdiction.
All right, I won't go into my usual diatribe about Ford Road traffic.
Noted, we've heard that.
Okay, but other, all the changes look great.
Thank you.
Yeah. Commissioner Eggenberger?
Yes, thank you. Patrick, maybe you can help me understand what an elderly housing, because this feels like active boomers and not elderly housing. Given that I'm way past 55, I don't feel elderly. And, and then, and this, I mean, before, I could, I could get why it was called an elderly place, because it had the assisted living, it had the memory care, but this just feels like active, does that? I guess I, my question is, by designating it elderly, does that give it more leeway on what we expect of it?
It, it does in some cases. With federal law, it, it classifies housing for the elderly as 55 and over, and our ordinance has specific criteria for housing for the elderly. So, sometimes we have inquiries of developers that want to do multi-family, and in a single-family residential zone, multi-family is not permitted. However, if it's housing for the elderly, then the density goes up because there's fewer vehicle trips, fewer uses on township infrastructure, and it, it tends to be a little less impactful than a non-age-restricted multi-family. So, the zoning ordinance gives more leeway to housing for the elderly in single-family residential zones. It requires it to have special land use approval, or in this case, PDD approval, but it allows it in more areas of the community, and allows it at a higher density than a single-family residential.
I think that's where I'm a little bit confused, where I agree probably less emergency, but I was thinking that, you know, the memory care and the assisted living people weren't driving a whole lot.
Yeah, and that, that is true.
And so, we really are looking at a different level of, of traffic than with the other ones.
We ran that study, we had the previous study that was done, and then this one. I think, there's a couple of things that are important to point out here. Our average resident age for these communities is roughly around 72 to 74 years old, so while that is, you know, the federal definition starts at 55, the reality is, it's much higher than that in practice. The, the difference in traffic that I think is important to note here is that, you know, with an assisted living or memory care environment, you have, you know, 40 to 50 staff. with an assisted living or memory care environment, you have, you know, 40 to 50 staff members three times a day shifting in and out of the property. We won't have that. Additionally, we won't have the level of like food service deliveries or medical equipment deliveries that will have 53-foot tractor-truck trailers coming through this site as well. So, yes, I mean, there will be more individual traffic, but when you factor in, you know, 150 trips a day on just staff alone, it significantly brings that down.
Okay. Thank you. That was helpful.
Yeah, absolutely.
Anything else?
Uh, no, nothing else. Thank you. I, I like the, the look of it.
Thank you.
Mr. Singh?
Yeah, nice project. When are you guys planning to start the construction and maybe completion date? I saw somewhere in there that by spring you guys are planning to get the approval, which is already passed. And then the completion would be in '27, so.
Yeah, our, our intention is to continue to move through the process that Canton has. So, next step upon approval here in the Board of Trustees approval will be to submit for engineering review and start the permitting process. As soon as we can wrap that up is our intent to start. If we can do that before winter conditions kick in, we would love to do that. But in the reality, if that's not possible, then that may be deferred until, you know, favorable weather in the new year. But our intention is to continue to move as quickly as possible through the process.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes, I'm trying to, I understand the explanation of left-turn lane, traffic and all. It doesn't look like it's firm. Is that because, excuse me, is that because we don't have any agreements yet with MDOT on what's really gonna happen? And if that's true, by the time they build, will these roadway improvements be there already? Or be at the same time? I guess I'm trying to get to.
I think as it's laid out on the site plan with, and if the, if that pork chop in the middle is done to MDOT specs, I think that those improvements in the right-of-way would be taking place in conjunction with the onsite development. And would be up and running and in place when the site opens. In terms of the off-site improvements, like the sidewalk and the turn lights, that's also subject to MDOT approval. Ideally, those improvements get timed at the same time as the development. But if for some reason they, they trail behind the development, then we would have the PDD agreement and anything else enforceable to keep that as part of the agreement.
Excuse, there is a left-turn lane onto Gorman, right, from Ford Road? I mean, yeah. Is that right?
Yes.
Am I reading that right? Okay. Yeah, that's one of the ones that I was really thinking about.
No, there's, the, the left-turn lane is on Gorman onto Ford.
Oh, wait a minute. Do you have one, if I'm reading this right, it's so thin. That's why I feel it's not. I'm saying to turn into the development from Ford Road, is there a left-turn lane there?
No.
There isn't one? So, you can get two lanes of traffic through this?
Yeah, so here's, here's Gorman Road at Ford. And there's an existing left-turn lane.
Got it. That's what I'm looking at.
I thought that was a merge lane. Just kidding.
Okay.
I get burned by that every day.
Yeah, I misspoke. It converts to two lanes after that.
After that, okay. All right. That's all I have. Thank you.
Yeah, so a left turn onto the western drive would not be feasible because that left-turn lane goes away west of Gorman.
Anything else? Okay. Commissioner Watkins?
Mic check. Can you guys hear me at all? You can? Okay, great. I, this, I got the wonky mic this time, so. So, real quick, if you could, Patrick, if you go in the packet to A262, it's in the concept design. I'm, I want you to tell me two things. What color are we looking at in your own words? What color are we looking at on the main buildings? Tell me what color that is. It looks slate black, something gray. And then tell me what color is the masonry? What color is the, the brick?
So, it will be a lighter colored brick. There's actually two different tones of brick that are being used. They're both a lighter, lighter color. The dominant, if you will, contrasting color, if you will, it was with the fiber cement in the balcony areas. And then on some of the other components of it, we have a darker, I think it's an iron ore color. So, there is a, there's like a, a black and white, which is very common in architecture right now.
Okay, and so then, Patrick, if we go to, to A262 in the concept, I'm looking at a garage and I'm assuming this
Concept stage, you're right.
So, the
Because when I'm looking at it, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
I'm seeing brown. But at the same time, you know, and I'm the guy who last time said, I saw the development that you did in another state.
Yeah.
Loved it.
Yeah.
This still doesn't give me what I saw. It doesn't. So, I'm wondering, what are we doing here? Is, I do see brown, like, is this shades of brown? Or, or am I just kinda like, we're just getting on this commission and not understanding what I'm seeing in terms of the
So, that's, that's a fair question. That's actually intended to be a, like a wood grain. It comes across as very brown here, but just adding some different types of features. Some of the early feedback we received from planning was to have, you know, differentiating doors on some of the units to kind of, you know, differentiate one unit from the next. So, this is an attempt to do that. I'm, I'm not an architect, but I trust my architects and what they will deliver on this.
All right, all right. Second question's gonna be, you know, we've run this, this back-and-forth race with, uh, and the county and that sort of thing. Happening on Ford Road. It might not be your day, but
Sure.
And developers are listening. Somebody's project is going to get held up because you can't make it to you today. But at some point, guys, we're gonna have to start to get traffic in our, in work in the best way possible. I think you've done a great job. But, but I, I think, gotta come up with some better ways. You can't turn left into this development. So, if you're headed westbound, you're gonna go down. What are we gonna do, guys? It's gonna happen. Everybody knows it's gonna happen. Some guys, if you're gonna get further down, you're gonna swing, you're gonna swing around, you're gonna hang a U in the middle of Ford Road. Not your problem right now, but you've got to start to think about this in a much better way.
Thank you.
Can I respond to that?
Sure.
So, I just, I don't disagree with you, Commissioner Watkins, but we basically, we're basically being told that our hands are tied when it comes to that. And I, I absolutely agree. We need to take a stand at some point. I hate to see our petitioners get, bear the burden of that when, but when some, until someone comes up with a better idea on, on how we get the attention of MDOT and/or the county, I, I don't know what that is. And I, and honestly, I, I don't necessarily think it's fair to hold up a petitioner. I mean, we can make our own judgments about traffic. I think we all kinda share similar opinions about, about the issues, particularly on Ford Road. But I hate to see us as a commission draw a line in the sand, say that we're not gonna approve somebody's project because MDOT and the county can't get their you-know-what together. So, and I don't know if that needs to come from our administration or what, or, or our higher elected officials, like the Yeah, I, I tongue-in-cheek said when we approved the mosque last month, that I, I don't know. I don't know if it's gonna take someone having a serious accident on Ford Road before it gets someone's attention or, or what. But I hope that's not the case. But I, like I said, I'm, I'm somewhat uncomfortable with saying someone's a project is gonna get held up or denied or whatever because of something that we don't have control over, so.
I, I wanna add something real quick. I think we brought this up at the last time. The challenge with that entrance that you're speaking of is the auto clinic across the street. Because they're so far encroaching into the right-of-way, they can't put a bypass or a left-turn lane. That's what's preventing them on this.
Well, they can. They just need to enforce what
Someone needs to enforce
They need to go to that property and say, you can't park these cars here.
And I don't know the mechanism to do that. They certainly don't have the authority or the means to do that. But somebody should, you're right. That way, I mean, you'd have a normal left turn in. And the Gorman, you probably wouldn't have to pave it to that extent. So, this particular situation, that's the real challenge, is that auto clinic. But I agree with what you're saying on other infrastructure that needs to get improved for these other developments to happen, wholeheartedly.
Thank you, ma'am chair.
All right, thank you. And I neglected to mention that we had a letter from, or an email from Chris Obadzinski in opposition to this. And I just wanted to, to state for the record that I was at the meeting where we reviewed this project the first time. And contrary to what Mr. Obadzinski states in his letter, I don't recall all of the planning commissioners agreeing with his criticisms or most of the planning commission did not agree with his concerns. We, we have concerns about the project, but we, we are limited as to what we can do to say no to a project as long as it meets the requirements. Also, in regards to my feedback, just for the record, I am an architect.
Yeah.
And I do especially
You caught the doors last time.
Pardon me?
You caught the doors swinging the wrong way last time.
Yeah, I, I wanna talk about doors again.
Okay.
In Unit A, the, the, since you guys have the plans of, of the cottages, I just wanna point out a couple of concerns I have about the actual doors, doors in the unit.
Sure.
One concern is, in the laundry rooms of those units, you have the washer and dryer in a closet inside the laundry room. And I think those doors are just gonna be in people's ways. I, I wouldn't put those in. I would just leave those, you know, setting in the space and not have doors because I don't know how you would do the laundry with those doors there. And then, secondly, similar concern about the walk-in closets in the primary suite. The double doors into that are just gonna be in the way. I would suggest a pocket door, you know, sliding one way or the other instead of having double doors into that small, narrow closet. That's really not a, I don't, I can't tell what the dimension is of that space, but it, it's like the doors are gonna swing and they're gonna hit the sleeves of your clothes hanging there. So, that's my feedback, but
No, I appreciate that feedback. And, and in full disclosure, we haven't gone through a full scrub of the interior
Okay, fair.
Floor plans here and
This is my only chance.
Is stuff that we would catch. We, we're not going to do a double door into the walk-in closet. You lose too much of the hanging space.
Yeah.
So, there's, there are things about this that we still need to refine with our team. But it was more or less getting the, you know, adjacencies and the overall square footage nailed down.
Yeah, and, and I have to say, I agree with Commissioner Watkins about the, the door colors and stuff. I think, you know, not sure that I like the, the different colors there, but, but I understand the feedback, so.
We'll, we'll take that feedback, get back to them as well. I understand that, that, that feedback.
Yeah, otherwise, I think it's a great project. I think that, you know, I agree with you. We have had concerns about the masonry exteriors and versus windows and, and things like that in the past. And, and we have talked about changing our ordinance, as Commissioner Foster mentioned. But I think this will be a very nice development, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, anyone wanna make a motion? You move to make a motion?
You move to make the motion?
I move to recommend approval of the Viva Bene preliminary PP, final PP, final PDD and site plan application, planning application 062-PDQ-8676 and number 0672 SBC 8638 on parcel 062-990005-700, subject to the following conditions. One, revising the plans to address planning division staff comments on landscaping, lighting, dumpster enclosure, and sign area. Item number two, revising the PDD agreement pursuant to comments by planning division staff and legal counsel. And number three, compliance with all state, county, and township requirements, including the permitting and construction of the off-site sidewalk along Ford Road and the traffic signals at the intersection of Ford and Canton Center Road.
Great. We have a motion by Commissioner Janowski in support. I'm sorry, who said that? Oh, Commissioner Watkins, thank you. Any further discussion?
I have a question for Patrick. And it's back to the deceleration lane thing. What mechanism do, I, I know you said, Patrick, we don't have a final, the final blessing of MDOT or whatever on, on putting that in place or whether they will. What mechanism do we have, though, to really kinda apply some pressure that that does happen? Because I think without the deceleration lane, I, I think that's a potential problem. I just wanna make sure there's some mechanism there. We can use a follow-up on that.
I don't know the answer to that question in terms of how, how far we can push and what, what authority we have. But I do know that our, our engineering division is advocating for it with MDOT. And, you know, whether, whether MDOT requires it or whether, you know, there's some other arrangement to be made where that could be built at the same time that this project's going on. We'll continue to, to work with MDOT and we'll, we'll follow up to see what the possibilities are just because of how important it is to get cars off of Ford Road as they're turning.
All right, I'm done.
Okay. Any further discussion besides that? Any further, further discussion?
I just wanna add one more thing. I like how we've got proposed sidewalk and you went above and beyond and took it to, was it Bell Tire?
Yeah.
And I think that's important for every project. I hate seeing a broken sidewalk because it's hard for the developer to cross a bridge. Well, I think we need to make these things happen. Connectivity is a big part of Canton. And I like the fact that they have frontages on both Gorman and Ford Road and sidewalks are put in to the full extent at the edge of the property. So, I think we should really promote that. That's it.
That's a very good point. And I also appreciate the right-turn arrows at Ford and Canton Center. That'll be very helpful to moving traffic through, so thank you. So, anything else? Anyone? Commissioner Egenberger, could you call the vote, please?
Sure. Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Commissioner Egenberger, yes. Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Janowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Singh?
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
And Chairperson Zubor?
Yes. Motion carries. Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
What is your, what is your timetable for construction?
Hopefully, I'm trying to get in before the winter this year. We gotta get through engineering and, you know, MDOT and all the other stuff. So, cross your fingers we can move quickly. That's what we would like to do.
Thank you. Have a good night.
All right, very good. Our, our next item is Rusty Nail Lounge, where we are considering a site plan amendment for parcels, several parcels, I'm not gonna name all of them, which are also known as 43845 Ford Road. The property is located on the south side of Ford Road between Sheldon and, and I think that's supposed to say Morton Taylor Road. It says Maton.
Maton.
Proposed landscape modifications. Patrick, tell us all about it.
Uh, sure. So, last year, the planning commission and the township board approved a site plan amendment application for Rusty Nail Lounge to add outdoor dining on the east side of the building. Additionally, the project also had a number of other improvements, including installing a stormwater pond, additional landscaping, constructing a dumpster enclosure, putting in additional curbing and wheel chocks around the perimeter of the lot, including compliant site lighting and creating a formal driveway circulation from Marlowe Street. So, the, the site construction has been well underway. It's, it's proceeded forward and it looks like it's, it's almost complete. There's one item that the applicant has requested relief on. And that's an area in the southeast corner of the site where there's the dumpster enclosure. And east of the dumpster enclosure, there's currently this asphalt pad roughly 20 by 20. And on the original site plans, it showed there being 12 shrubs in this area, just east of the dumpster enclosure. And the applicant has requested And the applicant has requested to still plant the shrubs, but to plant them in the existing landscape area east of the parking row. And to not have to cut into this asphalt area just to plant shrubs. The reason that that proposed area is there in the southeast corner as landscaping is because the zoning ordinance requires parking lot landscaping 25%. Or 25 square feet per parking space. So based on the number of parking spaces on the site, the ordinance requires 1,500 square feet of interior parking lot landscaping. The site, it's a longstanding site. It previously didn't have very much parking lot landscaping, if any. And there's been some new parking lot landscaping created with the project. And in last year, instead of 1,500 square feet of parking lot landscaping, there was a reduction approved for 633 square feet. The area in the southeast corner is 372 square feet. The applicant requests to omit that area and to reduce the interior parking lot landscaping to 261 square feet. There's also a ratio of required trees for parking lot landscaping. The applicant still intends to plant all the trees and all the landscape material on the plan. The exception is just to not put landscaping in the southeast corner. And instead, plant the shrubs in the established landscape area east of this parking lot row. And it'll also provide additional buffering with the parking that goes in that row. So it's a relatively minor modification in a corner of the site that's not really impactful in terms of, you know, its visibility from the right away. Or adjacent properties or anything like that. There is an adjacent property to the south, but it's buffered by a heavily landscaped detention pond area. So staff's recommendation is to approve a modification to the parking lot landscape area. To approve a parking lot landscape area of 261 square feet as shown on the revised landscape plans at 43845 Ford Road. And I listed all of the parcels in parentheses, so I won't list them all out here. And it's pursuant to section 5.07 of the ordinance. Which allows the planning commission discretion to modify landscape standards. So that concludes our report and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Patrick. Is the project sponsor here? Is that you?
Sir.
Would you like to add anything to what Patrick already said? Okay, all right, thank you, sir. All right, anybody on the board have any concerns or thoughts? Commission, I should say. I don't have any concerns about this, I think that's fine with me, anybody want to make a?
How does this impact Ford Road traffic? I'm kidding, I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
I just looked on the map, it says it's busier than usual tonight, so Rusty Nail.
I'm joking, I'm just saying.
Do we have big enough pork chops?
Yeah. Yeah, all those pork chops.
Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I move to approve a modification to the parking lot landscape area required by section 5.02C of the zoning ordinance. To approve a parking lot landscape area of 261 square feet as shown on the revised Rusty Nail landscape plans. At 43845 Ford Road. On the parcels listed in the, in this, in the agenda. Pursuant to section 5.07, subject to the previous approvals and conditions of the planning application number 057DIR7893.
Okay, thank you, we have a motion by Commissioner Weber and support by Commissioner Lee. Any further discussion? Commissioner Eggenberger, could you call the vote?
Sure, Commissioner Cruz.
Yes.
Commissioner Eggenberger, yes. Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
Commissioner Janowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Lee.
Yes.
Commissioner Singh.
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Weber.
Yes.
And Chairperson Zuber.
Yes, motion carries. Very good, thank you.
I did not see pork chops on the menu though, I was just looking for it.
Thanks, John.
Thank you. All right, very good. The next item up is Schuler Inc. Consider site plan amendment for parcel number 046-99-0008-728. Which is also known as 7145 Commerce Boulevard. Property is located on the west side of Commerce Road between Coppernick Road and Warren Road. Proposed parking space reduction from 130 previously approved spaces to 125. Patrick, tell us all about it.
Sure, thank you. In 2024, the planning commission approved a site plan for Schuler Hydroforming at the subject site for an addition on to the west side of the building. And at the time, the proposed building with the new addition required a total of 147 parking spaces. The planning commission approved a modification to permit 131 parking spaces. And to show a land banked area west of the building. That's outlined in green here on the plan. Where there would be additional parking constructed to meet ordinance requirements. If at some point in the future, demand required it. And so the site plan showed land bank area west of the site with 22 additional parking spaces. At this time, the applicant proposes to remove six of the parking spaces on the south side of the site. By striping larger spaces within the existing paved area. So there aren't any changes to the paving, the curbing, the parking lot outline. It's simply just widening some spaces. To offset that reduction in the six spaces, the applicant proposes to increase the land bank parking area by six spaces. So if the modification is approved and there's a demand in the future that warrants the parking meeting the ordinance requirements. The land bank area that's shown on the plans would be of sufficient size to build a parking lot that meets those ordinance standards at the time. If the demand warrants it. Based on existing operations, if they continue as planned, it's highly unlikely that there would be a parking demand that would exceed what's already in the lot there. Where the land bank spaces would be needed, but it's there in case it is. So based on the parking lot reduction that's proposed by the applicant. And accommodating the wider vehicles for larger vehicles and just allow for more door swing. Based on some of the comments from employees and customers of the business. We recommend approval of the modification. Section 4.01C6 of the zoning ordinance allows the planning commission discretion to approve parking lot modifications for less parking than what the ordinance requires. So we recommend approval of the 125 parking spaces pursuant to section 4.01C6 of the zoning ordinance. Subject to the condition that if planning services division staff determines that the parking demand exceeds the capacity of the lot. Then the owner must construct the parking spaces necessary for future traffic after obtaining site plan approval. So that concludes our report on this and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Patrick. Project sponsor, I'm guessing that's you? No, okay, no, is the project sponsor? Oh, awesome, awesome. What a guy, thank you. All right, well, we don't have a project sponsor, so there's probably nothing to add to what Patrick already said. Anybody from the commission have any thoughts or comments?
Not a lot, it's, they do manufacturing and warehouse and distribution. But when we've looked at over 20 or 30 aerial photos of the site, the last time around when we were looking at parking demand. They never came close to meeting their demand. At least based on the ordinance standards in their operation. And with their addition and their investment into the site, they'll probably be there for a very long time.
You mean we overparked a property, Patrick?
I know, hard to believe, but.
When they, excuse me, ma'am chair. When they say they need a wider spaces, what's going on? What's requiring, trucks or?
I think the vehicles of some of the employees, they just like having the room to park into a larger space. So if they drive a larger vehicle or, you know, open up the door all the way without worrying about hitting an adjacent car. They had cited in one of their transmittals of door dings and things like that by parking in the narrower spaces. So they wanted to put it a little wider.
It's for those Hummer EVs, yeah?
Yeah, I'm thinking.
What's the dimension of the larger space?
I think they were, I think they were going 10 by 20.
You know, that's, that's a normal, like ordinances are doing 10 by 20s. Canton is still nine feet and it is tight if you park anywhere. But 10 is comfortable, 10's like Home Depot, you know?
Yeah, we see a lot of applications too where someone may come in with 10 foot wide spaces and we let them know. You know, the ordinance has a minimum of nine, you can exceed nine. But sometimes applicants will narrow them to nine or nine and a half just to be able to squeeze out more spaces. But sometimes they decide to go with 10 because that's their decision and ultimately it's up to the applicant.
Well, I think in general, ordinances are too parking heavy. They're narrowing them to meet your parking count. When, here's an example where they know their demand. I'm always for reducing parking if you know your own demand, you know?
Exactly. Yeah.
Feedback on that, but in some places like in Detroit and stuff, Opera House and there's say other cities that I've worked on, which is totally opposite of us. And I support parking, but here I don't because it doesn't get used. But like in downtown Erie, Pennsylvania, there's not enough parking, you know? Everybody's fighting, same thing with Detroit and so.
Yeah, we need a motion.
I got you. I moved to approve the Schuler Hydroforming Site Plan Amendment. Planning application number 46-DIR-8670, parcel number 046-99-0008-728. At 7145 Commerce Boulevard for Schuler Hydroforming. Approval of 125 parking spaces pursuant to section 4.01C6 of the zoning ordinance. Subject to the conditions that if planning services division staff determines that the parking demand exceeds the capacity of the parking lot. Then the parking owner must construct parking spaces necessary for future traffic after obtaining site plan approval. For the same pursuant to section 27.02 of the zoning ordinance.
Support.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Watkins and support by Commissioner Lee. Any further discussion? Mr. Eggenberger, could you call the vote?
Sure, Commissioner Cruz.
Yes.
Commissioner Eggenberger, yes. Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
Commissioner Janowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Lee.
Yes.
Commissioner Singh.
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Weber.
Yes.
And Chairperson Zuber.
Yes, motion carries. All right. Have any miscellaneous?
Nothing else from staff.
So I'm, I have a question for you because I was looking at the packet, in the back of the packet, there's the applications. And I was so confused by-
You are confused.
Yeah, Clean Express Car Wash. They're saying it's going to be on North Canton Center Road between Ford and Horseshoe Drive. But on the back of the, I noticed that on the back of the agenda, it's 45001 Ford Road, which is the Meyer gas station location. So what's, what's going on with that?
Yeah, I can, I can talk about that. We've received a special land use application for a car wash. And that may be on the planning commission's agenda as soon as the August meeting, depending on. We've reviewed the plans at the first go-around and we're anticipating revised plans. So we may not have the public hearing on the special land use until the September meeting. We're still working with the applicant on additional information. But specifically where they're intending to apply for a car wash is west of Meyer, east of Antonio's parking lot. So it wouldn't necessarily have frontage on the road. It would be proposed to be in this mostly vacant parking lot area where people rarely park.
Yeah.
So we're working with the applicant on some plan related data for site layout, things like that. And access logistics as well as market data. Special land use criteria have some market data components to it, so we're still working on that.
Can they add a chicken restaurant to it?
Yeah. And self-storage?
If you don't ask, the answer's always no, so.
I want some self-storage. Anything else?
Wait, wait, whoa, whoa. I'm, the other thing, the other thing I'm confused about is the future thing with Voodoo Brewing, is that, is that an existing?
That is at the, that's proposed at the old Crave site. Crave BBQ right behind Raising Cane's.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay.
It was at the end cap of this multi-tenant building. So Voodoo Brewing, they have a proposal for a temporary outdoor dining. But they also want to do permanent outdoor dining, both on the west side and the south side. South side's a little tougher because it's tight there on that sidewalk along that drive. But the west side, there's plenty of room there. So we're working with the applicants on that. And Voodoo Brewing is a national chain, so it'd be exciting to have them here.
So they're, so they're a craft brewery? Okay.
That's an interesting spot for that.
It is.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah, they can go out, they can pop in there while they're waiting, while they're waiting for their chicken.
It doesn't take as long anymore.
I know, it is, it is a lot better. The only thing about it is, I would agree with Dawn is, they need to get that no left turn, that no left turn sign off of Ford Road.
In front of Raising Cane's, oh my gosh.
We'll look into that.
Yeah, I can't tell you how many times.
I see a number of people trying to turn left.
They're waiting to turn left there and they're like, you know, people stop to let them through one lane of traffic. But there's like, what, five, four lanes of traffic there? Yeah, and, and it's dangerous. And it's so close to the intersection that, you know, somebody's going to get hurt and it's not good.
Ma'am chair, two notes as you're driving through Canton. These are observations. I've been at the intersection of Canton Center and Ford Road turning south. And what has happened to me, and it hasn't happened recently. The light as you normally see is yellow. And then you have a green to turn. That's actually happened where it not turned yellow, but it turned red and you're in the middle of the intersection. That's happened to me a couple of times personally. I don't know what it is, some sensor going out or something. But always it's supposed to turn green because you're anticipating the yellow to turn green, but it's turned red.
Can you tell me what, what turning movement that was? Because I'm not familiar with that.
That was a movement going southbound from Ford Road to-
Westbound on Ford Road.
Westbound on Ford Road, but I'm turning south on Canton Center.
I've seen that happen.
But that is, that's scary because you think you're going to complete your turn and it turns red on you and you're in the middle of the intersection. The other one, observations on Canton Center at Geddes. The light was so short that traffic buildup, you know, the schools and stuff, that's just a bad intersection anyway. But this didn't help that the traffic signals are so short. But I'm just saying, that threw me off, I said, that's not right. So anyway, I wanted to raise it, it just remembered that that was one of my issues I wanted to get out to just make sure. Somebody was aware of it. It might be a sensor going bad or something, I don't know.
Yeah, we'll ask-
It doesn't happen all the time though, that's the problem, it doesn't. Yeah. That actually is intended? There was no traffic, that was the problem.
No, I think if there is a car there already stopped on the left turn, then it turns green. But if there is no car, many times if you're coming-
Maybe you're too far through the intersection.
Yeah, the cameras, that's what I, that's what I observed that-
You shouldn't be in the middle of the intersection then. Maybe you should wait behind the white line, sir.
No.
It's a camera sensor.
No, if they see me there. So you're telling me that's intentional? My wife observed it too, she said, dang this, why did they mess me up?
You're not being recorded.
So I'm in the intersection, but they don't know I'm there, is that what it is? But there's no green after that, it stops.
These hand signals are fascinating.
Next time, I'm already there. That doesn't make any sense. Those traffic engineers, sorry, I'm sorry.
Blame Alan.
It's a camera thing, it's automated.
We haven't adjourned yet.
Now. Okay. Commissioner Cruz, thank you, I know I'm not crazy, okay, thank you.